Member Schools Board of Education Workshop Number 1544 is now called to order. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Still moved.
Motion by Jen.
Second.
Second by Megan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion carries. Thank you. We'll move to 4.0 discussion topics. We have library policies and procedures for selection and reconsideration of textbooks. Okay. Uh, Dr. Sparks, I think you're gonna start.
I am, thank you. Um, I want to first of all introduce our panelists for tonight. We have Dr. Ronnie Zagora, our Executive Director of Secondary Education; Dr. Eric Cochran, our High School Principal; Karen Seiskie, our Lead Library Media Specialist; and Dr. Craig Hamby, our Executive Director of Elementary Education. So they'll be joining in tonight's presentation and conversation as well. I will tell you that the presentation is long, so we are going to do the best we can to be efficient and highlight key components of policies and procedures, um, and then include that in conversation. So Colin, if you go to the next slide. Um, this is our agenda for the, for the session tonight. We're gonna talk, first of all, about the current book selection process, and then also the fact that we've been in a library policy review for the, about the last two years, and what those recommendations are, are, um, are suggesting as changes based on feedback from both our library media specialist and our Teaching and Learning Board Advisory. We're gonna talk about the reconsideration process that we've gone through over the past, um, couple of months. And then finally, really want to spend some time talking about the retained with restriction, which is a part of, which is one of the options in our procedure for reconsideration that doesn't have clear definition, and, and we need to clearly define that for decisions going forward. I muted myself on accident. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Karen Seiskie to talk about the selection process.
Okay. Thank you, first of all, for listening to everything library-related tonight. And I'm gonna start with just some things about why we pick the books we pick, and the volume that we're talking about in a year. So if you think of our high school collection, we have fifteen thousand titles in the high school collection, and we purchase around a thousand books a year, and pay for database subscriptions, and things like that. And then in the middle school, we have one collection that's twelve thousand, one that's sixteen thousand, and likewise, they'll be purchasing around six to seven hundred books a year, paying for database subscriptions, supplies, those kinds of things. And our elementary libraries run from about eight thousand to twelve thousand books, and we usually order four to five hundred, maybe a few more, for the larger collections in a year. So keeping that volume in mind, and also the time consideration for ordering things, because in normal times, it takes about a month to six weeks to send in the PO, to get the book shipped to us, to get them catalogued, to get them back into our libraries and on our shelves. And so now, we're running about two to three months.
Can you turn your mic a little closer?
Sure. Is that better?
Yeah.
Alright, so, and now, we're running a little bit longer than six-week time period. So keeping that in mind, we do not read every piece of material that we order before we order it. We do rely on reviews to help us with that process, and have listed some of the reviews that were more common: School Library Journal, Common Sense Media, Booklist, Kirkus. Those are some of the reviews that we use. So we do rely on those, and when we're shopping from book vendors, from the websites where we buy books, from those companies that sell books to libraries, they provide all the information from just what the book is about, all that type of stuff, plus they offer what awards have been nominated for this book, or if the book has won awards, and it lists the entire book reviews for you. So it's kinda like a one-stop shop. When we're looking for books in those websites, it'll tell us all that we need to know, and we can see those reviews as we are picking books to put on our order list. Alright, next slide? Oh, I skipped one thing, sorry. And thinking, going back one. If we are looking at what types of books we order, basically to be really simple about it, we order for three things: something that matches the curriculum, something that's gonna match student interest, and then something, something that might fill in some gaps in our collection if we have any needs. So, that's the basics about selecting books. Next slide. And then, two years ago, DESI, um, started an exemplary library rating program. And so, if libraries apply, and we are going to have about four to five of our libraries apply for this rating this year, they are going to evaluate your library on twenty-one different indicators. Everything from the services you provide, the lessons you teach, to what your facilities look like, your staff and your budget, all those types of things. And one of the indicators is, do you have current board policies that relate to the library, and are they up-to-date within the last five years? So DESI recommends that there are eleven policies that should relate to libraries. We have most of those, but not all of them, and most of ours are not current. So, through the next slides, we're gonna go through the policies that DESI's recommending that we have, and see, and note things that we, that we need to either add to, or completely bring in new policies. So if there's the text in red, that means that it is a change, or an add to the current policies, and things that are highlighted just mean that, it's kinda from my memory, to remember what to emphasize on the screens. So, the first one was school volunteers. We have a current and up-to-date policy about school and volunteers. Technology usage, we have a current and up-to-date policy about technology uses. Students' fees and fines, there was one part that we have in our current policy that says that, can you go back a couple slides for me, Colin? Wait. One, there you go. And, it says that we charge for fines for overdue books. That is not true. We do not do that. We stopped that process a few years ago, so we need to remove that from our policies. We would like to ask that we request payment for lost books, knowing that sometimes that's not practical to do for some of our families, but we were going to ask for payment for reimbursement. And if a family can't do that, we are very understanding with that. But we would like those parts in the policy. And then, public gifts to schools, believe it or not, our current policy lists that if people donate things to the library, such as CD-ROMs, that we could accept them. I want you to know, we do not have any CD-ROMs in any of our buildings, so obviously, we need to remove that outdated language. And then, we've also are suggesting that we might put a dollar amount. So when should we acknowledge to the board that we get donations? Because in the library world, we get donations a lot. When you go to a conference, you're always getting free books. When book vendors come to see you, they bring free books for you. Sometimes, we have families who will donate some books when they clean out their bookshelf. And we use those donations following our selection process to see whether we will accept them and put them into the library or not. But it is not uncommon for us to see, to receive small donations. And so we just thought it would be nice if we had a number, when we should know, when to let the board know that we have gotten a sizable donation, and should be acknowledged in a public forum. The next policy is just the general instructional media centers. And that one, it, it addresses intellectual access, and then we need a part of a, a policy called a borrowing policy, and currently, we don't have that in our policies. So Colin, if you'll go to the next slide. Intellectual access, in our current policy, we have the, a statement, but we just kinda need to update our language, and also know that we buy books that support materials for learning and curriculum, but also for student interest. That's a very important part of our job, and that is not listed in our current policy. That we have, we buy books for learning and for fun, and so we need to put that language in there. Alright, next slide. And then borrowing, this is something brand-new. We do not have anything currently listed as a borrowing policy, and we want everybody to know that we kinda start with the idea that all students have access to our libraries, without any barriers. We don't have any requirements. You don't have to be a certain age, you don't have to get certain grades, you can walk into our library at any time, and you should have access to the information that you need to help you learn, and to also increase your interest in, in, anything that you would like to be interested in reading about. And we want this firmly noted, that we believe that parents and families have the right to choose to accept or reject materials for their own children. And we want to be respectful of that, that every family has that right. But we do want that stated specifically in the policy, so it is clear that we have that expectation for families. And then the borrowing policy also addresses things like number of books, the fact that we can put things on hold, that we ship books in interlibrary loan, we borrow from each other's libraries all the time, those types of things. So that entire policy is a new addition to the board. Okay, next slide. And then, collection development. Collection development really goes into three parts. Selection is how you're picking your books, weeding, and inventory. And in our current policy, the word "reading" is actually listed as reconsideration, and we would like to separate some language, because it's starting to get confusing about the difference between weeding and reconsideration of materials. Weeding is a natural process that we go through when we remove books from the library. Reconsideration is something that you're doing when something has been challenged. So we would like to separate those two words. We want selection to be picking books, we want weeding to mean when we remove books from the library, just as a normal course of the way libraries work, and then leave reconsideration for challenged materials. So under our selection policy currently, our policy is very strong. We really want to save what we have, except for we want to go ahead and add that language in. Remember, we're buying things for learning and curriculum, but we're also providing materials that address student interest. So we need to add that in there, 'cause that is an important part. Alright, next slide. And then, once again, there it is again. We provide materials for the curriculum and patron interest. And yes, we purchase materials that are factual for nonfiction, we want materials that will help build our background knowledge, we want, and even number four, we do have materials on controversial issues. And we feel like that's an important part of becoming a critical reader and a critical thinker, is that you look at different perspectives. And that goes into number five. We want a diverse collection that allows us to have the voices and the perspectives of other people. Okay, next slide. And then, number six, if you've heard me talk before, I say this one all the time. When we buy books, we don't judge it on our personal opinion. If that were true, I jokingly say, I would never buy poetry again, because poetry is not my favorite thing to read. However, every year, I look at poetry books and I purchase something for Dressel, because I know it's important for the collection. So we don't judge books on what we believe. We judge books on whether they are good for our students and our collections. And then, in number seven, we want to make sure that we add that we do use reviews and selection tools to help us pick our books. Alright, next slide. And then, weeding. So weeding is what we do on a regular basis. We buy new books, we also remove books from the library. I always use the analogy, it's like cleaning out your clothes closet. Every once in a while, you're gonna clean out your clothes, you're gonna give some away, you are going to throw some away, you're gonna buy new things. If we only purchased new books in our libraries and never removed any, we would run out of room. It's actually happened at Dressel, because we bought the collection full, and so for five years, I've done nothing but buy, and my shelves are full. I'm out of room at Dressel. So we do have to naturally take and remove some books. In our, in our policies currently, we have five bulleted points that help us know when to remove a book. And so I brought some to, for examples. This is a well-loved book. The cover is gone, it's seen its better day, we're going to remove this one. It's gone. This one, oh, our little friends, sometimes water bottles are really hard to carry along with their books. This one has been water damaged, and it's gotten wet, so it's going. Now, this one I won't repurchase, because I have a hardback copy. So this is really just a remove, I'm not gonna repurchase this one. This one was a brand-new book this year, and we have to have it the first day of unicorn school, so I've gotta order it again. So I will reorder this one, even though I removed this copy from the library. And then this one, Amelia Vidalia Talks Turkey, Looking Further and Being Mindful of What Stereotypes We're Promoting in Literature. This one I removed, because it does not, it has a very negative stereotype of indigenous people at Thanksgiving time, so I don't want this in the library anymore, and I'm going to remove it. And I have other books for Thanksgiving that are much better than that. And then, I have some that are perfectly fine, there's nothing wrong with these books. This is an excellent story, by the way. If you haven't read, restart, you should. But they're in excellent condition, but I have duplicates. In fact, I have four copies of this. I don't need four copies anymore, and I need room on my shelves for new material. So these are in good condition. I will remove them from Dressel and offer them to other libraries in our district, or even classroom teachers for their classroom libraries. So those are some reasons why we remove things from the library, and it is a natural process. You buy new, and you remove, or else we're gonna end up with shelves that are too full. Alright, next slide. And then, inventory. This is something that we do not currently have in our policies, even though we do it, and that is one of the DESI require, or suggestions that we have. And inventories are very tedious, but they are very helpful. When you inventory, you literally scan every single book in your collection. And by doing that, it helps us clean up our digital record, because it will tell us what is lost and gone forever. So we want our digital record, the catalog, to say exactly what we do have on the shelves. So when we do inventory, that helps us do that. We can delete titles that are truly lost, that we do not have. It also tells us, like the big Nate, where, you can see which books really are looking like they're in poor condition. So you get to physically touch every single book and make an evaluation of it. And plus, it also tells us where we have gaps or in our collection that we might need to put some money towards. So it drives our budget and our purchases for the next few years. It lets us know what gaps we have in our collection, and where we should be putting some money. So that is why we do an inventory. And because it is so tedious, we do not do it every year, we try to do it on a routine basis, maybe every two or three years. And so in the policy, we just say routinely inventory, because we don't really like to do it every year. It's a long process, but that's inventory. So those are the three parts to collection. It's selection, weeding, and inventory. Next slide.
And I would like to just clarify, weeding is not a Lindbergh term. I know that's an odd name. That is very common in library land, so to speak. Um, and it is common vocabulary that you would hear other library media specialists use when talking about how they curate their collection. Um, so just a point of clarification, 'cause I know that word seems a little odd. So what Karen has just referenced are policies, and policies tend to be a little more general. Um, and so, as we went into this process, we were really very dependent on one of our procedures. Our procedure with regard to if there are public questions, comments, or concerns regarding any of the materials. One of the things that we found as we moved into this procedure is that the detail we needed was not necessarily within the procedure. We found ourselves reading between the lines on quite a few things, trying to follow the procedure in a way that was accurate, but also to make sure it gave us the clarity to go through the reconsideration process in a, in a way that was appropriate, fair, and would ultimately, um, support both the concerns of the, of the complainants, as well as the needs of our students. So, in this, once again, like with the policies that Karen just referenced, the areas in red are new, um, elements being added into this procedure. Um, so, one of the things you'll notice, and this came up as a question for us, is when a book is requested to be reconsidered, what does that mean if it is in, um, if, if it's only being requested from, let's say, one elementary library? Well, we have six elementary libraries. So one of the points of clarification that we determined was, it is appropriate that if it's being reconsidered, um, in that process for one elementary school, that whatever the outcome is would be applicable to all of the elementary schools. The same is true at the middle school. Since we have two middle schools, if a book were being reconsidered at one of the middle schools and going through this process, whatever the outcome was, would be applied to the other middle school as well. Obviously, the high school, we only have one high school, so that was, that was pretty clear in terms of how we would handle that. Next slide, please. Alright, so as we add, as we went further into this, one of the other pieces, a lot of the other questions were, what happens if a book is reconsidered? Let's say it's determined to be restricted. What does that mean for if a student is at another level? Would they be able to access it? And so what this does, when the procedures also clarify, that those books would not be, um, part of interlibrary loans within our district, that they would, they would be retained, um, only at the appropriate level that, that, that had been identified. Um, the other thing was, a big part of this procedure that was a question mark were all the timelines. We didn't have any timelines as we were going through this process initially, so we had to really develop them by, um, by experience. And a timeline that was a big question is, to what, what's the timeline for the reconsideration process? What I mean is, if a book goes through the reconsideration process, at what point in time can it be reconsidered, either for removal, or to be returned to the library? So we identified a five-year span, so that there's clarity that when a book goes through this process, it will not be allowed to go through the process again for another five years. Again, just a way to have some clarity and understand how do we respond to, to different situations. Yes?
Matt? Thanks, Matt. So on, just determining that, that timeline, so five years, is that, I mean, was that just sort of arbitrary, or is that something, are, are you looking at some other models of where that has been done? Is that coming through an organization recommendation? Were you, how are you arriving at that?
So, we looked at a few different things, and we did look at other policies from other districts, um, and one of the things you'll note is there are areas where other districts don't have clarity to. So, in some ways, we found some clarity in other policies and procedures, and in other ways, we had to make a determination as to what we think. Um, we saw a span of three to five years in that process. Um, we spoke with our, our district attorney about that as well, and so ultimately landed on five years as being an appropriate time span. So yes, there was research with regard to that.
Right, thanks.
Um, and then the other thing that came through that we really needed to do within this procedure, is to ensure that there was, there was clarity between what is a library reconsideration, and what is a classroom consideration. The way the procedure was written originally, you couldn't really see the difference. And so throughout the, the slides, you'll see here that there's a level of clarity for, um, who's engaged when it's a library concern, and who's engaged when it's an instructional concern. So those were some other additions. And I want to go back to, this was a part of extensive conversation with our Teaching and Learning Board Advisory, so they gave us some really good feedback, even in the draft documents that we had to provide additional clarity. And that was one of the areas where they felt like initially, we still didn't have that level of clarity. Alright, next slide, please. So then, what you'll see here is where we start to identify that level of clarity. So, one of the things that is real when there's a concern about an instructional material in the library, or in the classroom, or text in the classroom, is we always want to start with a conversation. The, the first step should not be, let's, let's do a formal complaint and start the reconsideration process. The first step should be, let's have a conversation. I have questions, I have concerns. And then, so that's what you see with number one. All initial concerns should be addressed to the appropriate department. So, if it's something that's happening within an English classroom, for example, that, that should be where the conversation starts, and then with the, the department chair of that particular department. Then, if that does not resolve the concern, um, then we can move into that reconsideration process, which starts with the formalized complaint, the paperwork, et cetera. Um, and that would go then to the building principal with the expectation that, um, the person who is, um, asking for the reconsideration has fully read the material, and that they are turning that in with knowledge and understanding of what those concerns are. Next slide, please. Um, here's another area where, again, if you look on, on bullet point five, within twenty days, so you'll notice, first of all, we are seeing those timelines. How long is it gonna take for us to make sure that we get this process started? So we've got to convene the committee, we've got to determine who that is, and then move forward with that. And one of the things you'll notice in our current policy, it talks about the building principal. This now says the designated administrator. That's for two main purposes. One, um, because in the case of an elementary or middle school challenge, there might not be one clear principal, there's multiple buildings. So it gives us the flexibility for Ronnie or Craig to lead that process, because they oversee those, those age spans overall. It also then gets connected to, back to the, is it a classroom situation, or is it a library situation, and is there maybe, you know, an appropriate administrator to lead that, who oversees those specific departments? So it allows some additional flexibility there. The other thing that we've done here is we've specified, uh, the range of people who should be participating. Again, that goes back to how do you, how do you flex that for who are the appropriate people, depending on if it is a library challenge, or a classroom text a challenge. Next slide, please. Alright, so again, you can see the timelines that have been added here. So, read, review, or listen to the material in its entirety within twenty days, complete, and then you go down through the rest of the process. There's still a checklist for school, um, media reconsideration, so that process still continues on. And then, that clarification of, we're, we only have the capacity to do one text at a time. I think we have, we all are cognizant of the, the time constraints that it takes to read and really process through and think and consider this, so we want to make sure that, that the committee is able to be focused. It's time-consuming for people. Um, being on multiple committees is not gonna be practical for, for those who are engaged in the process. Next slide, please. Again, you see here the timelines that are emphasized, that the final meeting's scheduled within five days after, um, after everyone's had a chance to read that. Um, that's where conversations will happen, majority vote, which is an anonymous process. Um, even though the, the meeting is, um, a, a time where people are able to share their thoughts, the ultimate outcome that they're sharing is anonymous. Um, and then, at that point, the, the outcome is sent both to the complainant, the Board of Education, and then the committee. I'm sorry, all three. The three options that we have for an outcome are for a text to be retained, for it to be retained with restriction. Now, this is an area where we have no current, um, clarity. And when I say that, I mean, that's not common anywhere. Our, our library media specialists have reached out to districts all around the region, and no one has clearly defined what does retained with restriction mean. What I have here, bulleted, are if we strictly followed ALA processes, there is a caveat to this, that I don't think that this should be the one that we follow, and I'll explain that when we go through the retained with restriction options at the end of, of today's presentation. Um, and then also, the idea that if you're going to, if, if a, a text is removed, we need to make sure that there is a comparable text that is, that substitutes it. Again, going back to what Karen referenced earlier, you want to make sure your collections are complete. If you're removing a text, you want to make sure that that didn't leave a hole within your collection, that students would, would lose access to. Next slide, please. Alright, so again, um, clarifying some, some timeframes, so ten days for a, an appeal, if the complainant would like further consideration of that. And then you'll notice down on number eleven, there is that, again, clarification that, depending on what the, the reconsideration was for, if it was for library materials or instructional materials in the classroom, there's a clear path to the correct people who are engaged, um, in that process. And then, twelve is really just a, there are times when we are gonna do the best we can to accommodate these timelines, but if the committee has a significant number of conflicts, and we end up being a day off, there is, we need to have that flexibility. I know that's one of the things we've seen, just in the holiday season, and people's schedules, and trying to make everything work, that's been a challenge. So while, we'll, we'll do our absolute best to meet within these timelines, um, there needs to be a little flexibility for extenuating circumstances. And then our next slide. Alright, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Cochran to, um, share about the process that we've currently had.
So we might, we might live on this slide for just a few minutes, because this is our opportunity to kinda express some of our experiences that we've had, going through a process that, I think as Dr. Sparks has pointed out, while we definitely had a policy that outlined some basic parameters, there was, there was a lot that was not spelled out. And so we had to really kinda figure some of this out, uh, as we went, and we really tried hard, as a, uh, committee, uh, to help make some of those decisions, and make sure everyone agreed upon what the right direction was to go in each one of these meetings. Uh, I am really proud of the work that has been done by the people on this group. We have, um, we've had some variety of attendees, uh, but for the most part, we've had a pretty consistent group. Uh, I take that as a good sign, that everyone wants, I, I give them every, an option every single time. I know you're all busy, um, here's our next book. I set it on the table. I said, if you don't want to continue on, just tell me, and don't grab a new book. And they are always taken off of the table every single time, because I think, uh, every person on our committee takes this very seriously, and is very engaged in the process, and thinks what we're doing is important. And so, we have, we have been through three full processes, and we've started a fourth at the high school. And, uh, the conversations have been rich. Uh, I, I take it as a, uh, again, another great sign, that, uh, when I get emails from individuals who are serving on that committee, uh, they make a point of saying that even when they feel like they don't agree with everyone else on the committee, that they feel that they are being heard. And that's really important. Um, we have talked about a lot of different things. Outside of talking about the book itself, uh, we've had to kinda fill in some of the gaps, that the policy doesn't really define very well. We've had to talk about some library philosophies, uh, we've had to talk about the possible restrictions, because we did go into a process where one of our votes was going to be retained with restrictions, but it wasn't really clearly stated what with restrictions even meant. And so we had to try to come to an agreement upon that before we would vote, that everyone on that committee was very comfortable with. Um, we talk a lot about trying to meet the needs of all the learners in our library, and how to make sure that, that, uh, every student is represented, and that every student has some choice that is going to make the library something that they're excited to go to. Uh, and then we've had a lot of conversations about parental rights, and how do we make sure that books are available to, uh, students who want them, but how do we also simultaneously make sure that we have a plan to, uh, keep books out of the hands, uh, for whom a family may not want that specific book in their hands? whom a family may not want that specific book in their hands? And that is a very challenging thing. We've had consistently, myself, Dr. Map has been on our committee almost every time. We've had two students, two parents, one to two teachers, depending upon who's available. And then we've always had at least two librarians. Karen's been there. The librarians have been phenomenal at answering a lot of questions about how they do their work. I've learned a lot about how they do their work. But the process itself, again, has been, just in my opinion, outstanding. We talk in great detail about the book. Everyone shares their perspective. We talk through some of the challenging material. There's some challenging material. There are definitely some things in there that some of the members of the committee struggle with. And then we talk that through, and while we don't necessarily always come to universal agreement, I think we all leave feeling that a good process has taken place, and everyone feels that they have, again, been heard. And so at the end of that, we always kind of set some parameters for voting, so that everyone is very clear on what they are voting for. And then we vote, and we keep that vote anonymous because I think it's important to protect everyone's choice so that they feel free to actually cast the vote that they are comfortable with. And up to this point, we've had, as you know, three that have gone through this process and have been put forward and returned back to the complainants with a response. And I know that I was the first one to get to do this, and then elementary got the chance to jump in. And like most things, Dr. Hamby just usually grabs onto my coattails and tries to learn from me. So I'll let him talk about it.
I was going to say that I just learned from Eric, and I just rode his coattails through this. But the high school had done one of the challenge processes before elementary. So we and Mrs. Siski was on the group with me at the elementary. We did follow the same model as the high school. It was slightly different because it was being challenged at two buildings. So we were representing the elementary as a whole group, but we did have teachers and librarians and parents and administrators from both buildings in question as we went through. So our committee was about two persons larger than what they had at the high school. But we followed the same committee, or same procedures for the committee. The voting was anonymous. We had good discussions about the book. Ours was a quicker read than some of the ones at the high school, being an elementary book. And then we shared the results with the committee and shared the report with the board and
All right, next slide. So as I've mentioned earlier, as Eric referenced, the retained with restriction has not been clearly articulated for us, in the sense that we wanted to really analyze what are the gamut of options, from the least restrictive to the most restrictive. And as you go to the next slide, I just want to highlight kind of some of the challenges in this process. When we think about ways that we could restrict, one of the things to consider is labels. How do we label texts? Do we focus on interest, which tends to be age spans? Which age spans would be most likely to be interested, and then it's considered age appropriate for those interests? Or do we go into other specifics, which I'll reference as we go through this? Shelving. Should these be shelved in a public area or in a restricted area without student access? Parent options. Should it be an opt-in to concerning materials or an opt-out of concerning materials? And then the American Library Association guidance. It does encompass schools in that guidance, but we also are very cognizant of the fact that we are a school and not a public library. What role does that play in the decisions that we make? So over the next six slides, I'm going to give a relatively brief summary of the levels of restrictions and kind of what they come with, and why they would work in different senses. And then I'm going to share at the end the recommendation that we are giving for what is the best option. Next slide, please. So option one, this is what's currently referenced in the draft procedures that we saw earlier in the slide. So this fully follows ALA guidance. ALA is not a fan of labeling books because you end up getting into subjectivity. Books come from publishers with expertise in terms of what's the appropriate age span, interest level, with guidelines that they use to guide that work. So that's not something that they're arbitrarily deciding. There are guidelines that they use to guide that. Obviously, when we look at option one, this would mean access on the school library shelves in public area, and then families could choose to opt out of things by interest. So for instance, if I am concerned that a book, I'm a parent of a high school student, and a book has been labeled as adult, as an interest for adult, then I would say, I do not want my child to be able to check out any books for the adult interest level. And then that would be that opt-out for parents. Next slide, please. Option two is very similar to option one, but it adds another layer, and I think that this layer is noteworthy one. So it is a labeling system, similar to interest level, which interest level is already on most books, but this one also would be a mature content, and then specifically for the age span that it's recommended for. The thing about mature content that is, what makes it a good option, is that if we use interest level only, there are books in the library that are labeled as adult. For instance, Jane Eyre. When Jane Eyre was written, there was no young adult interest level. So it has been published as an adult-level interest book. Cookbooks are adult-level interest books. So when a family makes the decision to opt out of something that might be adult, they're also opting out of things that they may not have a concern about at all. Mature content would give a little more clarity to those books that have that content that may be more questionable. One of the things that's really noteworthy with both option one and two, and then also with three, right now, we do have self-checkout for students where they can come in and they can use the iPads and check out the books on their own, and then move on to class. This would not be an option for students who have opt-outs because the library media specialist and the assistants would not be able to cross-reference that within our system. So something definitely to keep in mind. Next slide, please. Option three is similar, using a label, but this one would be age-specific. So let's say in the case of The Breakaways, for example, which was one of our books that was challenged at the elementary level, it is designated for children age eight to 14. That's the publisher label that came on that. The committee or the group could determine that the restriction is that it's only for fifth grade. At fifth grade, it's appropriate for fifth grade. We keep it on the shelves, but only a fifth-grade student or above could check that out. The issue with that is maybe maturity levels differ among kids. Reading spans differ among kids, abilities, so forth. So that would potentially keep students from being able to check out based on age who might be fully, whose families might be really comfortable with that. The same could be true with the high school library, where we could say 17 and above to check out. So again, a third option when we're talking about labeling of books. Option number four, this is where we start to move into more restricted access, where we're looking at a separate place in the library for the books to be retained. So if they were in a separate place, then the opt-out for families would be, I don't want my child to have any books that are in the restricted area. The challenge with this particular one is it also means that students are having to ask for texts, or they're having to go into an area that is clearly restricted. Therefore, we lose the student privacy component. A student who might be really questioning their own identity or their own sexual orientation now is being required to kind of, for lack of a better word, out themselves in order to have access to materials that may be helpful for them. Not because their family has concerns about those texts, but because the way that we've led the restriction. So that's going to be something to consider as well, is what kind of barriers we are creating for kids, and are those barriers we should be creating? Option five, next slide. Very similar. So again, this is a progression. So option five could be a combination of a restricted section with the ages. So essentially, keeping the same as option three, where you have the age restrictions for who can check them out, but the books are also in a restricted area, so they're not publicly available on the shelves. And then the final option is restricted materials, and this would be an opt-in option. So the most restrictive of them all, where no, the students would only have access to it if their families gave express permission for those texts. So those are the, that's kind of the scope of options, from least to most restrictive. As we go into the next slide, Colin, you can see what we're recommending is option two. And I think that this is a really important component. By having mature content for the label, we are not censoring additional books for students. So for instance, if we kept ALA guidelines as they exist, where you'd only label by interest level, then there's a large number of texts. If a family says, I want my child opted out of the adult texts, then there is a large number of books that they also would not have access to. So it's an additional censor that we don't necessarily want to create that barrier for students. At the same time, there's a level of clarity with mature content, that we don't add layers and layers of subjectivity. For instance, in the age span example, how do we determine what's appropriate for a 17 versus a 16-year-old? When publishing companies and the guidelines are coming out saying it's appropriate for 14 to 18, and then we are creating a more subjective measure beyond that, what's the consistency that would happen there? But if we label it as mature content, that can have a much more generalized summary of the fact that there have been concerns about this book. I think that with all of this, and we'll talk about it in the next slide, its key is communication. And actually, I'm going to ask you to go back, Colin, I'm sorry. I jumped ahead in my language there. The key really is communication, making sure parents and families understand what all of these options are for them, in terms of being able to opt out, and what that means for their children. The other thing that we haven't really referenced in the conversation up till this point is the fact that we have a memorandum of understanding with St. Louis County Library. We have an additional access point for texts for our students. Our students have St. Louis County Library cards, which give them access to digital content through eBooks, gives them access to databases. That's where the bulk of our database research is contained, because that's a very valuable partnership. And then also to the physical St. Louis County Library, which means that they also would have these, access to many of these texts that are being reconsidered at this time through that partnership. So one of the other things that we are recommending is that within our yearly processes, we give families the opportunity to also opt out of that St. Louis County Library partnership. So there's another layer there for families who may be concerned about access to eBooks, since that is where our eBooks are accessible for students. That's another layer that is an option for families. Again, I do offer the caution because it comes with our databases as well. So if students opt out of using the St. Louis County Library partnership, there's also a limitation of resources that will have to be considered for other purposes. All right, and the next slide. This is where communication is really important. So I'm going to give an overview of this, and then Karen's got some specific examples. Our library software is a program called Destiny. And this is where we are able to catalog all of our materials, where students do the checkout process. There is not a parent portal for Destiny. However, what there is, is the ability for parents at any time to use their children's access in order to see what is, has been checked out to them. The other thing that we can do is, and we have not done this up to this point, we've really used communicating with families who have concerns. We've really used Destiny as a way to communicate with them that they could go into their child's login and look, and then also that we could limit access to certain types of texts that they are uncertain that they want their children to have access to. And that happens in many ways. At the elementary level, that may be a family who says, you know, I don't really want my child to have any scary books. So that gets put into the Destiny record, and families are able to say, and then when students check out, they are not given a checkout, or they are not allowed to check out any books that fit that category. The thing that we have not yet used is their, Destiny can run reports. It does this for overdue books, and as a way to check which books we need to collect from students. We could have parents opt in to being able to see an automatically-generated report that is emailed to them to see what their children are checking out. We're recommending that that's an opt-in because we know that many families are bombarded with communication from schools. And so we want to make sure that that is something that, for those who want it, they have access to it, but for those who don't, it's not another layer of email to have to mull through in order to get the information they need on a day-to-day basis. And then finally, just having a really clear process of getting that communication out to all of our families. Next slide, please.
Okay, so these are some examples of what I've done screenshots of, that you can see. Whenever a parent comes to me and asks me for certain requests for their child, we can add a note to Destiny. And this is what it looks like. When you pull up their name, it comes up right at the top, and I can add in what they would request. This is a common request in the elementary, that some parents do not care for Captain Underpants. And so I can just simply say, no Captain Underpants, and then we know when they come to the checkout, if they have that, we're going to say, you know what, I think you need to go find something else because your family doesn't like this book. And so they can go back and pick something else. And that's how we can handle that very easily. Next slide, then. And then whenever, we said that you can, you have access, all parents have access to what the children have checked out. In Destiny, all you have to do is have your child log into Destiny with their Google account. And there are two interfaces for Destiny. The younger students usually have a more visual look to it, and there's a tab that's called My Stuff, and you can see what they have checked out, if they have any items on hold, if they've marked anything as their favorite book. And of course, there's a find, even though we don't do finds. And then the other interface is not as visual, but same thing, there's a tab that says My Info, and you can see their checkout, if they have any holds or anything like that. So everybody has access to this. The children can sign in to Google with their Google account and get this. So that is always available for parents to see.
All right, what questions do you have?
So I'm curious, how do I know what kind to opt out of? Like, is there subject lines and like categories or things like that? And how many? Because it's overwhelming to me right now. I'm thinking there's like 50 in there.
Right.
And what if I opted out, would it cross over into other subject areas, and then my child is not able to read?
Right.
Different genres?
Mine, it really does, it helps if it's a specific thing. Like, please don't let my child check out Captain Underpants. I don't want that. Because that one is a specific thing that we can easily identify. The scary books, it's pretty easy for me to take a look at the cover of both the book and judge for a kindergarten friend, that this is going to be too scary. If their family doesn't like scary things, I can pretty well judge that. When we get into other things, if we were to say, I don't want my child to have anything that has to deal with drug abuse, that's going to be harder for me because I don't absolutely know the content of every single book. Remember, I'm talking about in my library, 11,000 books. I can't possibly have read all of those or know the content of every single thing. So in Destiny, there are subject headings that are listed, so when you look up a book, it will tell you a description of the story, the synopsis of the plot, and then down below will also tell you subject headings, which are kind of like themes of the book. And it may or may not list them all, because again, it's just going to list the major things that are covered in the plot. So this is where we've had lots of conversations about where do we draw the line, of where do we know what's in a text to opt out of if it's not in the subject heading, and we haven't personally read the book to know. And so yes, there is a fine line of where do we, how can we manage that for the volume of texts that we have in our libraries? It is a concern.
Karen, thank you for all your hard work. I appreciate it. I know this has taken a lot of time. So thank you.
We have the partnership with St. Louis County Libraries. Just curious, can parents, like, can they read it first? You know, with Christie's question, like you're saying, not all 11,000. But if they had a question about a book, do we help them partner with the county library so they can read it first?
Who could read it first? I'm sorry, could you clarify? Like, the library?
Yeah.
The county library?
Well, we don't have, parents can't check out our books, right? Just the students can.
Correct, correct.
Can a parent read it first? Could they have access through the county library to read it?
Oh, I see. If you signed in with your child's account, it's based on their child's ID number. So yes, indirect, yes, they could.
Okay, thanks.
So as of right now, if a family does not want their child to read something that's pretty specific, like, I don't want them to read this title, this title, or this title. Okay.
Yes, and that's very easy for us to do. And it's a little bit more common in the elementary world than in the other levels, but there's very rarely a year goes by that I don't have a parent call and say, could you do this for my child? And it's very easy for us to do.
And then Dr. Sparks, I have one more question. When we were looking at the policies and proposed policies and procedures- When we were looking at the policies and proposed policies and procedures, we talked about the three choices if a book is challenged, and the last one was replaced. Is that an ALA recommendation, that that type of language be used, as opposed to removed?
I'm going to look to Karen, because I don't remember seeing that in the language.
That is not an ALA recommendation.
Okay.
It's not listed as a recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
And the key to that, as I shared earlier, is making sure we don't inadvertently can design holes within our collection.
I don't really have a question, but I spoke with Tara about this labeling, and books twenty years ago are labeled as adult, but whoever that powers, the AMA or whatever it is, they don't ever change that labeling.
If a book were republished, because that oftentimes happens with some classics, where they are republished and reprinted, then that would be updated during that time. But if a book had not been reprinted or republished, then no, probably it would not be updated.
Okay, so looking at mature is probably our best bet, so we're not eliminating some of that older information, too. Okay.
Yeah, I have some questions, and just please bear with me. So I know you guys have been working hard on this, and I know, I'm sure you, in particular, Karen, have had a huge task here. I just wanted to note, as we were going through the slides, like, on Slide seven, where we discussed, you know, the connection between library collections and curriculum, and I know that we're making an amendment to this, in addition to this, that includes, you know, patron interest, I think, so that would be like general interest for students. And I guess my question is, and it's something I thought about, it's like, well, I would think, and particularly given, as we've been told, there are some limitations on space and so forth, ought we not to be really focusing on curriculum-connected books that support our teaching and curriculum first and foremost? And kind of, you know, the more general interest stuff can be found in the public libraries, and I think that's what public libraries are really for, for more general interest. And if any student wanted to go there, they could. And, I mean, I'll be honest, I mean, even, you know, when I was a kid, I went outside my school's library on purpose, and I thank God for that to this day, because it created an interest in me, which continues in libraries, and has taken up so much of my life in that. But I just wanted to ask you, then, why now that connection?
Well, why now is just because when we read the policies, when we were evaluating them for our DESI exemplary rating, we noticed that that was not listed.
I'm sorry, I can't.
I'm sorry, whenever we read the policies, when we were going through this to evaluate this for our DESI exemplary rating, we noticed that that wasn't listed, and that has always been the role of a library, to promote learning and the enjoyment of reading. And so that is a two-part fold with our students. We really feel like if we can help them enjoy reading, like I said, they will continue to be lifelong readers, and that is one of the best things that we could do for our students. And so we also have, and I know that this is hard to understand, but we do have some families who do not use the county library. I have had families at Dressel, who literally live within walking distance of Grant's View, and they've told me they've never been to that building before. So there are families who do not use the county library, and we also want to remind ourselves that we could be that resource for those families.
Right, and they have, though, access to the county library through their devices, though. Every student has a device, right?
I could add on to that, though, Mike, when the enjoyment of reading, you know, is something that, for kids to become better readers, we want them to read a lot, and we're always trying to get them to read. So, for example, if there was a new sci-fi movie that came out, that was appealing to elementary kids, we might see an influx of students wanting to read more sci-fi, or it might be a mystery movie, we want to do that. So we have to compete against all the other distractions that these kids have, to try and engage them in reading. So interest level, it could be tied to the curriculum also, because most of our ELA curriculum, reading different genres is going to be part of our curriculum. But what can we do to get kids to become readers? That's where we have to kind of tie into these trends of what's going to lead them to read right now.
Right, right. No, I understand, I think this, for me, was a question of emphasis, you know, how much, say, personal interest versus curriculum? And are we, by adding that statement, you know, basically saying, we're going to kick up that, you know, those volumes on that side of it, on the personal interest side of it versus the curriculum? In terms of where we've been, are we looking to increase that?
No, and we have always had a practice of evaluating our collections, so that we do have nonfiction, especially informational texts, and texts that relate to the curriculum, along with interest texts. That is not a new policy, it's just the idea that it wasn't listed as part of our philosophy, and that is something that's very important to us. But no, our collections, we try very hard to make them well-rounded, especially when we adopt a new curriculum. We always look at that to see what we can add, to make sure that we have support in the library for any new curriculum when it is adopted. So that is always part of our process, but our process does include the love of reading and trying to find those high-interest titles for students.
Mike, if I could just add one thing from the secondary perspective, because I don't want this to be lost. Our secondary libraries especially, they're communities within the school, and for students, they're often a place where they find similarly-minded peers, we have book clubs, we have activities, it's a social space for our students, and a lot of our middle and high school-age students, that's where they find their people, so to speak, is finding other kids who like to read the same kinds of books. And so I think that that piece of there being books for interest, in addition to supporting the curriculum, has always been the case, and so I think putting it into writing makes sense, but it is, it's an important social space for students who share similar interests.
Okay, well, thank you, Ronnie, for that. And also, I wanted to take us to Slide fifteen, which is basically looking at the review process, the challenge process, as it's now going to be proposed, to be laid out. It looks like we have extended the period of time, right, over what we've had previously, and I think we're at twenty days, and then, you know, to, you know, after a challenge's form has been filled out and received, we have twenty days, and actually, school days, right, so that's almost a month, to, you know, begin to set up the process, get a committee together. And by the way, I sat in on the committee yesterday, and I've been asking to do this, okay, and I put some feelers out, because I feel like the board needs to be involved more than we have in this process, to understand what's going on, to listen and learn. So I was in attendance yesterday, with Eric and with the group, and it was a very, you know, it was a good discussion. I am glad I went, and I heard the different perspectives. I am not a participant, nor do what I want to be, it's about listening and learning. I thought that's what we're all about, listening and learning. And so I came away, and I feel like I, you know, I've been informed more than I have, and I want to actually encourage my colleagues in any kind of future, you know, challenge meetings like that, if they can't attend, we can only do it up to three of us, I know, but I found it to be very fruitful for me to go. But then looking at, again, that extension, is that something we would want to consider, given that, to me, I added up the days, and it looks like, for one book, it could potentially go in excess of two months, if you look at the organization of the committee, and then the review time, and it could go out as far as two months. Do we want to extend this process that long, or would we want to, you know, bring it back, particularly since we know that this can be very time-consuming, as I know you know, Eric, very time-consuming, and if there are a number of books being challenged, then it just seems like this is just an ongoing kind of process. So I don't know if that's just, you know, something to consider, or if these committees could ever be formed, as I've also recommended, somehow consecutive, you know, to operate or to function consecutively, not consecutively, but.
Concurrently.
Yeah, thank you, concurrently. It just seems to me it would help expedite the process, okay? That's my other observation on the committee process. And then also, another thing with the challenge committee, it seemed to me that, just the way these are organized, I know under current policy, but it looks like we're kind of, we're carrying this over, is that the call on organizing these committees is the building principle, the building head, still, so it has been, and it will continue to be, correct? Or maybe with the librarian, or one of the librarians.
So a couple of things, first of all, we'll take that feedback and go back and discuss these timelines, and determine what is an authentic process. I think we definitely want to make sure that there's enough time for people to read, and, you know, really focus in on the book.
Hey, can I ask one quick question? But currently, our procedure on this has no timeline.
Correct.
So we're not lengthening it at all? Okay.
Yeah, it just seemed to me that, given, though, the amount of time, and depending on the material you're reading, too, because it could be something pretty easy, it could be something, or a graphic novel, you can get through a lot quicker, or a thicker book, and obviously, you know, there could be some adjustments for that.
And I would just.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. And that's the thing, just because that timeline is twenty, and Tara's right, we can take that feedback, and the committee can review that, but also understand that, you know, Karen has, you know, work that she's doing as a librarian, Eric is a high school principal running a twenty-three-hundred kid, almost high school, and he has those other, so again, yes, graphic novel, they could knock it out, maybe, and whatever, I think it's more about, you know, when you have a six-hundred-page book, or you have something that's going to require that time, because they are, you know, responsible for other things as well. So I think that's important to keep in mind.
And that's why I mean, you know, to do this concurrently, if possible, to have an assistant principal in your stead, on another committee that could run concurrently, would also, I would hope, for your time, get this process in the rear-view mirror, then, get the conclusions done, you know, sooner, and that's just my perspective. But I also, I wanted to ask, too, about, I wanted to bring up, again, how these committees are formed, it appears to me like, it's, you know, there's a lot of district representation. I don't see as much parent or community representation there. And when we're dealing with issues such as this, and often, as we know, some of these subjects can be very difficult to, you know, to discuss, there is also perspective, not just within the district, or within administration, or within, you know, among the teaching staff, but, you know, I would think we would want to invite more parent participation than just, I think, one or two. I think they're referred to as patrons, right? But they could be parents, they might not be. But parents, patrons, or taxpayers, as I like to call them, who live in the district, who might have some interest, and we know, we're in a community where we're in touch with so many people, who have either gone through this, schools in this district, have kids, but there's a connection or somewhere that they might be willing to step up as well, especially when time is so precious to a lot of others. That's my other observation. And again, I don't want to take up too much time, it's just, when we talked about the option, I think it was, was it option four with the labeling?
Are you talking about the recommended option?
The recommended option.
Option two, yeah.
It was an option two with labeling, okay. Because this is something that's been really, I've been trying to grapple with, because when we're dealing with books, media, and so forth, and particularly visual media, obviously, you know, we're impacted differently by what we read, what we see, and, you know, using labels, okay, using labels might be helpful to say, this is a mature level, but I guess my issue with that is, and I'm going to discuss this later, too, is that when you have material that is, say, targeted to those seventeen and above, you know, we talked about age, maturity levels, and so forth, and yet we have to ask, who's going to determine maturity levels? Teachers, librarians, administration, parents? So when we talk about labels, if that is present, okay, and parents have access to be able to get on the system and to flag those, they don't want their children checking these out. They will be kept out, though, for access to any child, let's say, a freshman, say, a thirteen-year-old freshman. You know, with an MA book, that's still there, I guess my point is, when I think about this, I think about, say, and again, we're using other media, comparing this to other media, but if you're going to a movie, that's, well, quote-unquote, the hard R, MA, you know, seventeen movie, and, you know, somebody, a young person's walking up, and they're carded, and they're told, well, sorry, you can't go in and, you know, see that movie. But what we're doing here is saying, well, officially, they can't check it out. But to me, it's almost as if then, you know, you're walking to that window, before you go into the movie, and you're being told, no, you can't go down to this theater and see the movie, in Theater One. However, we have, over here in Theater Two, you're going to find some clips, you're going to find some parts of that movie, or the whole movie, that you can just go in for any time and view. So I just see a conflict with that, and it's just, almost like a contradiction.
So your concern is that they're still on the shelves, and therefore, a student can still pick it up and see it?
No, well, if it's at a level of maturity, or grade, or age, where it's labeled, as it's being proposed here, like an MA, and if that material is, say, suited for, say, seventeen-year, seventeen-plus, then, I mean, it would appear to me, then, that student, or a student who comes through, who have been told by their parents, they can't check out this book, yet can see it, it's almost like, you know, we have Spectrum, and so, you know, I'm flicking through the channels, and the other day, I come across the movie Atomic Blonde, if anybody's seen that, it's just some kind of spy movie. I didn't watch it, but I did notice, you know, I clicked on info, just to find out what it was about, and it was an R movie, it was a hard R movie. But commonsense media, we recognize commonsense media here, they're the ones who put up a flag for parents on that media, on that particular movie, noting not only the content in a general way, but in a very specific way, there are scenes involving this, 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 and that. And I know, and I think you, Tara, you're familiar with commonsense media, you recommended it, you know, and I've been occasionally looking at it, but, you know, here, what we're saying is, you know, parents don't really have, then, in the end, the right to monitor, then, that kind of content for their kids, as they would if, say, they're going through the TV, and they're finding this and that content, maybe that's not appropriate for their thirteen or fourteen-year-old, or whomever, you know, in their home, and they can begin setting up parental controls. Here, there is no parental control, then. There is, in a way, for checking out.
Correct.
Okay. So how do we reconcile that?
Well, and I think that's the challenge that we have, in also reconciling people to be able to have access when they don't have concerns about it. So it always comes back to that individuality of, what are those needs? Now, can students bypass systems? They can. I mean, we've all worked with students, and we know that they can be very clever in how they work around the systems that we put in place. But we do the best that we can to be able to communicate that, to give parents options, to have that level of clarity, for students to understand what their expectations are from their parents, and then we hold to that level of expectation where we're able to do that.
And so there comes a point where, and again, you know, this is something where we're going to have to have, I think, a bigger discussion, particularly with parents, and I think at some point, it would be who, you know, the board and administration consider doing something, I think what we've done with. consider doing something, I think, what we've done with so many other aspects of our district functions, is setting up something like a board advisory committee on library and, and media. I know, Karen, you're over there, you're groaning. You don't want to, you are groaning on that. But, but all I'm saying is that invites that participation so that people can, I guess, can feel more heard when things are going on in the libraries that they're not just always sure about. And I think we just need to restore trust wherever we can. So that is, that's my other option. And then we talked about this, that was just my other comment, but one last thing. So I, I know we had a discussion before related to some materials going back a couple of years ago, and in the Teaching and Learning Committee. And there was some discussion, I don't even recall who said it, but the term decolonization came up. We needed to colonize our collection. And I thought, okay, well, what is this about? Well, and I asked you about that. And so, and I know you, you reported back to all of us that there was, at the time, there was one book, I think, being used in the Lucy Culkins curriculum?
Correct. It was a read-aloud for, I believe, third grade that was perpetuating.
Correct.
Stereotypes, yes.
Now, so I got curious, you know, being a library book. So I actually found the book right here, Stone Fox. And it's, it's interesting. It's like an elementary read. It's about a boy, 11-year-old boy in Montana, who lives on a farm with his grandpa, a potato farm, and the farm is failing because his grandpa is very sick. So he does whatever he can to find and raise money to save that farm. There's only one thing he can really do because the banker's coming after them, and that is to enter the dog sled race. Okay? And he has one dog and he enters with some contestants, other contestants. And there was one character in here, who's actually the title character here, Stone Fox. And he's a Native American, and he is the all-time champion, okay, in dog sledding. And the boy knows he has to go up against Stone Fox. Well, I don't want to give too much away, but in the end, after this race is over, some bad things happen, but Stone Fox, the Native American, comes out as the heroic figure, really heroic figure here. So I don't know what went into that process of judgment because this book was eliminated or taken out of, taken out of our classroom collection, right?
Correct. Not out of our libraries.
Not the library, but in classroom. And we're talking about classrooms now as well as library. And this book is in St. Louis City Library, there are hard copies. It's in County Library, and it's in ebook. And it's in Maplewood, Brentwood, University City. I got this in Maplewood.
And again, in Lindbergh Libraries. It's, Karen and I had the conversation today. It is in the Dresel Library. That is another example of where publishers pulled it, the publisher of the, of the curriculum resources, and made recommendations for alternative books.
Because, yeah, and this has, this is an older version. There's a newer edition. And.
Mike, in the respect of time, did you have a specific question?
I get it. I get it, Mike. Thank you. My, my, just my point is, there is discretion that goes into this process. And there are different perspectives that are brought to it. So apparently, some people have one perspective about the value of this book, or the others that we're, that we're considering tonight, for instance, that others may disagree with. My only point is, we need to bring more people to the table. That's all.
And real quick, Dr. Sparks.
That's it for tonight, guys. I'm sorry.
On something else, just to note, the 20 days I thought was too short. So if we're going to open that back up to discussion, I'd like for each of us to have our opinion noted.
So noted. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody have any more direct questions? No? Okay. We'll move to 5.0. Do I have a motion to adjourn Board Workshop 1544?
So moved.
Question by Matt, second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Board Workshop 1544 is adjourned.
So I know we.